Okay. John and Jean, are you ready?
They're ready.
Well, they're just trying to get us going. It's okay.
I'd like to call to order the school committee meeting of November 9th, 2021. A motion to open.
So.
Moved by Ellen. Second. Second by Lauren. All in favor?
Aye.
Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
A moment of silence. Thank you. So I am standing in for Tim tonight. So please bear with me as I make my debut facilitating meeting. I would like to thank EB Cam for recording and I know Zach is alone. So thank you Zach for stepping in and recording the meeting. And also as we approach the end of the first term, which is tomorrow, right Liz here at the high school? I just want to thank the administration, staff, teachers, everybody for all their support as our kids transition back to school this year and a little bit more of a normal year. And also I would like to congratulate all of the varsity sports teams this fall on their seasons. We've had several teams make the playoffs and the girls are continuing. Girl soccer is continuing right now. So I just want to say thank you as we move, we reach the end of this first term. Now we have first up a report from Lucy from the junior senior high school student advisory council.
Alright, so I'm just gonna start with the central school. They had their first sandwich jam that was held on November 3rd. The second graders made more than 115 bagged lunches for Father Bill's mainspring house. Thanks to Mrs. Trumbull for carrying on this wonderful outreach project originally started by Mrs. Lee and our former music teacher. Parent teacher conferences will be held on November 17, 18, and 19th. And during these conferences, families can visit the Scholastic Book Fair, which will be in the gym. All teachers are reading and sharing the book, Our Favorite Day of the Year by A.E. Ali. The story focuses on celebrating all students' favorite holiday traditions and/or special days. The story will support our inclusive holiday celebrations and instruction over the course of the winter months. And the junior senior high school, as she said, the girl soccer is still alive in the playoffs. The last home football game is gonna be on November 12th, which is this Friday. The week before Thanksgiving, the marching band will be playing in an assembly for students and the turkey bowl will be for 7th and 8th grade. Teams had their senior nights, which all, I saw a bunch of pictures. Mine was, mine was nice and everyone seemed to be having a good time. Mr. Clements told me that the Food Bank Fridays will be starting leading up to the holidays to gather some canned goods for families who need them. And he also decided that Thanksgiving break will be homework free, which is super nice. Thank you. The term closes tomorrow and grades will come out next week. And senior perks will be discussed with seniors in the following weeks.
Senior what?
Senior perks.
What are senior perks?
Like senior privileges.
Oh.
Oh, yeah. And that's all I have. Thank you Lucy.
Discuss.
Discuss is the key word here.
Lucy's like, I got that out for you. Did he tell you to put that out there for him?
Does anyone have any questions for Lucy?
Thank you Lucy.
Thank you Lucy.
You're welcome. Alright, we will move along to superintendent's corner.
Thank you. Before I start on the agenda, I do want to just talk a little bit about what happened a couple of weeks ago, which brings me into the school calendar. But we had a unprecedented type of tornado hurricane weather event that happened. It took two days of school away from us. I want to thank Chief Heron. Our calls became, we started talking Tuesday evening of that week. His, his call to me Wednesday morning was at 4:59 in the morning as we began to talk about what we would do for the school district. I can't say enough of Chief Heron's communication with me continuing throughout the day. And his rest of his fire department, they were tremendous for the remaining days and their efforts to clear streets. We actually came in on Thursday. On my way out Thursday around 5 o'clock, there was a fire up the street. These things just happen during these electrical events when poles go down and trees go through houses and things like this. And these guys were, all the fire trucks were out, all of their ambulances were out. They were out all day long trying to help and support and making sure that people were safe. Talitha Connors, our school resource officer and the entire police department, we want to thank them for their efforts and working with us and trying to get to people, trying to let our students know what was happening. Talitha actually on Thursday, on Friday morning, when we had to take Wednesday off because we knew that we needed to stay off the roads, as Chief Heron and I discussed, he didn't want anybody out there riding or coming to schools. We certainly didn't want the buses out. We didn't know what was gonna happen with the amount of wind that was coming through it. I think it was 80 miles an hour, 70 miles an hour. And I think his exact words to me is like, we have been, this looks like a war zone up here Liz, we can't do this. So we called on Thursday, Thursday through, or Wednesday throughout the day. I stayed in contact with police, fire. Dr. Williams didn't have any power, so we really didn't connect as much as we would have to let people know what was going on. Tried to get ahold of the principals. Most of my principals had electricity and heat and thank goodness for that. However, their students didn't. They were very nervous about their kids and making sure that their staff was okay as well. I want to thank them for all of their reach out to their community and to their own schools. But Talitha Connors did pick me up Friday morning when our fleet came in, buses. I did put them out Friday and said, let's get back into school. We thought it was the right idea. We think, we know it was the right thing to do. We provided breakfast for every school. Thank you to Deb Vaughn and her, and her group of, of food cafeteria workers. We couldn't have done this without them. We provided breakfast. We provided lunch and a hot meal. Our showers were open if kids needed to take a shower. We did, I do want to apologize. We did not know about Pond Street until Mitchell School Run had begun. We did not know it had been closed. The Mitchell, but then we did know that on the Mitchell School Run, one of the bus drivers said, we can't get down. They turned around and the bus came up a different way and did contact some parents. We did not know and we didn't know until later that morning and that's one reason on Pond Street. But I did talk to a parent. I apologized on behalf of the district. I take full responsibility when, when those things happen. However, we just can't, I don't know everything. I try to know everything. I tell John I know most everything that goes on. However, there are some things I don't know. I didn't know that. However, Lucini Bus Lines kept in contact with Mr. Shea. John Shea came, met with Lucini during the day. They came over to our building and sat down, I think for about two hours to make sure that we could get all students home in the afternoon. And we gave an update at 11 and then 1, at 1:30, right before we let the high school buses leave. I want to thank Lucini, the DPW guys, they were tremendous. They were out there cutting trees and helping out the electrical companies that came in. The trucks that were coming up 495 on my way into the district. It says a lot about, again, and I put this out in a letter last week, just thanking everyone. It takes a village to raise a child. Without my administrators and the faculty and staff, we were about 100% full capacity of teachers, staff, administration here working on Friday of, two weeks ago. The fire department, they were in full capacity. The police department was in full capacity. And everybody was out there doing the best that they can to get moving. When you drive in, I even went over to the bus yard and just thanked everybody on Friday. When I came in, it was very early. A lot of the electrical trucks that had been out working throughout the day, or throughout the night were sleeping in their trucks in the CVS parking lot and across the street over at Job Lot and across, and then back by the movie theater. They spent a lot of time in East Bridgewater and whether they can hear us from here, National Grid and all the other companies that were here, we want to thank them because kids needed to be in school. We couldn't do what we did, you know, two, a year ago to them and keep them home any longer and got them back on a Friday. So I just wanted to take a moment to thank everybody, especially Chief Heron, the fire department. Their constant communication with, with the schools was just terrific. Talitha took me out for a ride after all buses had gone through, after we got central school in. We took a ride. I saw a tree through a roof in a, in a home. She took me up, up the street here to look at the house that had started on fire that I saw on Thursday on my way out of the district. She took me to see the streets that we couldn't get down with buses. I can only imagine how scary it was for a child to wake up and not be able to see the other direction. And so we're just happy. I'm proud of the way my, the way the district reacted. I'm proud of the way my teachers and staff and administration was there to field questions and to be part of the solution and to continue to be proactive. Each of the principals were outside talking to parents, helping people get off buses. I sat, I saw Mrs. Burn out there. I talked to Andrew, Mr. Gentile. Bill was running from front to back, making sure buses were coming in and then he ran to the front to talk to parents. So I think we worked well as a community. I think the effort is 110%. Our administration team was here in the morning. Joanne Benner, Amy Stevens were right here when I, when we came in very early to make sure that the telephones were being answered and I think we alleviated. I do want to say that we were sending out messages. We were sending out robo calls. We were doing the best we can. Some people did not have power. That was something that I did talk to Chief Heron about and talking to the police chief at some point. We've got to figure out, how do we get to those students if that happens again? And how do we get down the street and just, you know, how do we relay a message? You know, who goes and who says to the kid and how do we know? John and, John Shea did a terrific job with transportation and finding out the streets with Gail Howard from Lucini and pinpointing, you know, 259 Washington, 261 Washington, 270, we need to get to those kids and let them know somebody will be there. So I don't know if we'll ever get 100%, but we'll get as close as we can. I think, I think they did a great job and so I just wanted to thank everybody for that. And it was a very scary couple of days. And makes it even scarier that now I have to push the calendar through the next week for everybody. No one likes to see an extra two days added on and going to June 21st. And like Dr. Williams said, always says, well, we're gonna have a couple of snow days. So that'll even push us to June 25th. She wanted to, she says, you know, just call up Desi and see if we can trade this in. We haven't even got to the winter months. So knock on wood and hope that we don't. Maybe the commissioner will give us a Christmas present and give us those two days that the South Shore lost on those. I don't know. But I will say that right now we're at June 21st and that's, that was the reason for the calendar agenda item. I did attend the MAS, MAS joint conference last week. A lot of discussion on social emotional learning, equity and diversity. You're going to hear a lot about that in our strategic plan this evening that Dr. Williams will walk us through along with our principals and directors in the district. And they'll take over and talk to us about that. We are talking about social emotional learning. We're talking about the traumatized child. We are having professional development. We recognize that we have a lot to do and a lot of work to do when it comes to diversity, equity and inclusion. We're doing the work. I don't want anybody to think this is new. I don't want anybody to think this is just on our plate. We are starting to eat it. We're starting to chew on it. We're getting the taste of it. We're starting to understand it. I don't think anyone, and the only person I could probably point to that has, would, has the amount of PD that maybe you can even start to have these types of conversation in the district would be Dr. Williams with the amount of time she has to put into PD and looking out for our curriculum and our teacher safety and the student's safety. Julia Sheehan, she is a high school teacher. Mrs. Byrne has started HERP, a group of community teachers on equity and diversity at the central school. Andrew Gentile and Mrs. Duprey are starting at the Mitchell School. This is a district-wide opportunity for us to grow. This is a growth mindset. What do we need and how do we need to talk about this? We'll, we're going, it's going into the strategic plan, so it will be budgeted for. It's time we need to think, we are thinking about it. We are discussing it. It is in our PD. We are going out for more PD. We had a nice meeting with the EBCC, the East Bridgewater Coalition. Today at 5:30, Dr. Williams and I meet with them at 5:30 before each school committee meeting. Everyone is welcome anytime. They would like the high school principal and possibly his assistant principal to come to the next meeting to just to talk about some, some equity issues and like to hear what we're doing at the high school level. So this is not falling on deaf ears in our district and across the state of Massachusetts and I think across the country. I do not want to politicize this. I want to make it about kids and how we talk to kids about being different and being the same, thinking differently, thinking out loud or thinking inside and thinking not the, the same as one and not the same as the other. But it is on our plates. And it was a great conference. I wish that you all could have come. I went virtually and in person. Project 351, we have a student that's involved in that. They're eloquent young men and women speaking about social emotional issues, about diversity and equity. I love to see some more students get involved in Project 351. I got to see the Mash, the Mash Tucket Indians, I think that's how you say that name. They presented. There was things I never knew what, what has happened over time. So it's always a learning venture for me. I wish that you all would have been there. I know that it's, it's very difficult in this time of year, but I'm glad that you did join virtually. I got a letter of intent to retire from Deb Benson today. The high school threw Deb Benson, who was an administrative assistant here at the high school and in the guidance and more recently in the front office. She has retired effective November 11th, 2021. She is a veteran herself. She is a National Guardsman and she wanted to retire on Veterans Day. I have a letter of resignation from Ryan Kamara. She was, she just gave birth, I think, not so long ago. And I think that she, we'd love to have Ryan come back and we'd love to see her back here in East Bridgewater. However, she does have a newborn and maybe closer to home is, is better for her, so. I added on this list, filled positions for the district. This is, this is a big list, as you can see. This is a great list because as you can see, we don't have any, really, we don't have a lot of blanks. We will be, we will be replacing a music teacher. We're working on that right now. We were, we are, we just, Deb Benson came, excuse me, came to see me about 10 days ago, 15 days ago. Let me know about this. I did post her job immediately. They have been doing interviews throughout this process and they finished up today. I do have a candidate on my desk, so we should have that replacement in the next couple of weeks. Music teachers being, they are working on it at this time. We hope to have a music teacher in place very soon here at the junior senior high school. The nurses, we did hire a nurse last week, asked her to come in. We asked her to be .5. Dr. Williams thought that at this point, and we did not realize that Ryan was resigning at the time. So we just asked this, this .5 nurse to become a 1.0 nurse and then we'll move to find a .5. So we will have a full-time nurse in each building. Two full-time, sorry, I'm sorry, two full-time nurses in each building this year. And last but not least, I do want to thank the veterans for all of their, and their constant work for us to have diversity and equity and inclusion where we live. And the freedom to speak and the freedom to walk down the street. And the freedom to have different outlooks and values and thought processes than each other and be able to have conversations and not yelling and screaming. And that's what they fought for and they always continue to do that and they keep us safe. And I want to thank all of our veterans here in East Bridgewater and throughout, throughout the Commonwealth. And last but not least, I'll hand it over to Dr. Williams to, to review the strategic plan. And just to let everybody know that the plan does support and it does drive the budget. We try to achieve the goals by following the district plan. And then the district plan is then followed by each of the schools' school improvement plans. Once the district plan is, comes to fruition in the school committee, votes on this and says, yes, this is the way we go, then the schools can do their school improvement plan, which pyramids up to the district plan or pyramids down, however you want to look at it. It's a well-thought-out plan. We spent our entire retreat not only talking about social emotional wellness of our principals and our central administration team this summer, but at our summer retreat, we worked on this piece of the potty. This, people think that this is just a, something that we do. This is really a process for us. This is where we as a team talk about what's valued, what we value individually, what we value as a team and how the team is going to push the mission, the vision, and the focal points of what the district is looking forward to move the district to by listening and hopefully that the school committee on November 22nd from 4:30 to 6:30. Lucy, I'd like you to be there and bring a few of your friends to sit and talk to us and work with the administrators from 4:30 to 6:30, 4:30 to 5:30. They will be in small groups, will be in small groups. And Dr. Williams will talk about each group as she goes through the strategic plan. We invite anyone in our community that has a child in the school or not a child in the school. I will also have conversations with Chief Heron, Chief O'Brien, Mr. Haynes from DPW, the Council of Aging, our Newtown administrator. And hopefully they will join in the process. Not only do they have children in the district or had children in the district, but they're already, they're part of our growth. And our administrators will lead the discussions. They will, they like to hear input. We want to hear input. It drives the district. It drives our budget process. It makes it much easier for myself, Dr. Williams, the principals, especially John Shea. If we have a, if we have a focus of what we want to do and who we want to be, it's easier to drive the budget using this. People think this is, we just do this to churn and to say, oh, yeah, we did the process. No, this is, this is the meat and potatoes of our schools, of our district and of the budget process. Dr. Williams.
Thank you. So this is a working draft. As the superintendent has mentioned, on November 22nd, it will be an opportunity for stakeholders to weigh in. We figured it was good for us to have a starting point so that it can create conversation. So just to reiterate what the superintendent had said, every school building has a school improvement plan. On the district level, they're usually known as a district improvement plan or a district strategic plan. And we refer to ours as a district strategic plan. A lot of the school improvement and district improvement initiatives come from the state level, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Ed. And I felt this was important to just share with you so that you have an understanding of all the different offices within the Department of Ed and all the different initiatives within those offices. And then us trying to at the district level make sense of all the initiatives and how we can take all of those and put them into one succinct document. So I received an invitation to be part of a focus group for Friday, which I was glad to receive this because the four offices within the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education that work on school improvement, the Office of Language Acquisition, the Office of Statewide System of Support, the Office of Educational Technology, the Office of Kaleidoscope Collective Learning. Those four offices have six different tools. The English Language Blueprint, the Multi-Tierred Systems of Support Blueprint, the Acceleration Roadmap, the EdTech Planning and Access and Equity Guide and the Turnaround Practices. So as we sit down as a district and think about the initiatives and the tools that the state is providing for us and think about how we're gonna use all these tools to then make them work for our district and drive the needs that we have within the district. What we did is we looked mostly at the Multi-Tierred Systems for Support because that falls right in line with the Universal Design for Learning practices. And we also looked at the roadmap for acceleration. However, there are still four other tools that the state has requested that districts utilize within developing their plans. So the focus group that I'm gonna be part of on Friday is, the state has come up with a coherence map. That's supposed to be one map that's supposed to take into account all six tools developed by all four offices. So I'm hopeful that after Friday, there will be at least a draft of one tool that the state is putting forward that districts are supposed to utilize when developing their district improvement plans or strategic plans, which will ultimately turn into building-based school improvement plans and how the goals that have been set forward by the district look at the building level. So if you look at our draft, our working draft right now, we also felt it was important to put on the front for you where we were with our former goals and where we are now. Because, you know, we certainly don't want to give the impression that when a new strategic plan or a new district improvement plan is put in place, we just put aside everything we've been working on up till then and we talk about, what do we now want to do? What, what new things do we want to do? So there is a crosswalk and a continuum of the things that we've worked on. But a couple of important things that came out of our conversations this summer at our retreat was as we worked through our old plan, we had professional development as a separate goal. And we realized that that really is woven within all the other goals. You know, certainly if we have initiative and action steps for curriculum or assessment then, and for social emotional learning, there's going to have to be professional development that goes along with that. And I think coming out of the pandemic, pandemic more than ever, we also realized by having a separate goal of technology, that's infused within everything that we're doing, especially our teaching and learning, but also within our assessment of students. So you'll see that we went from having four goals to three goals. We eliminated two. We eliminated technology and professional development as separate goals because they'll be embedded within the three goals. And we've separated out curriculum and assessment because we really feel like those are two distinct things. We need to rely on our assess, our assessment to drive our teaching. And can't be looked at as just the end result of our teaching. We then do an assessment and we move on. We usually, we have to always use that assessment as diagnostic, as prescriptive, so that when we make decisions about what we need to teach next, we're actually utilizing the data and analyzing the data from the assessments that we're giving so that we're not taking the time to teach students skills that they already have or we're not going on to skills that students aren't ready to acquire. So our three skill, our three goals are broken down to social emotional wellness. So our three skills, our three goals are broken down to social, emotional wellness, strong instruction, and assessment and monitoring of student understanding. The other thing you may notice is there is an order to the goals and we felt it was very important that we put social, emotional wellness as our first goal. In the former plan, it was second and the rest can maybe better recollect. I don't remember us really coming up with an order before that we felt had meaning behind it. It was really just, we need four goals, well, we have four goals and here they are, which we were very deliberate about social, emotional wellness being our number one goal because without that, then our curriculum instruction and our assessment and monitoring is not going to be effective. It's the relationships that we build with students that help get them ready to learn and help to get them successful in their assessments. So we did very deliberately put social, emotional wellness as our first goal. Also, you'll see a lot of the same names moved from working on that goal in our former plan to now working on that goal in the new plan and really because they have the most experience with working within that goal. There were definitely people who could have easily been in all three and we don't want to spread anyone too thin, so we did make sure that we had each person designated to one subgroup. So what we'll do, and again, this is a draft, this is certainly not complete, this was initial thoughts of things that need to go, action steps that need to go in, some thoughts and ideas about the timing of when things should be accomplished, but the 22nd will really be a thorough opportunity for us to really digest and share with one another because the subgroups haven't even really shared amongst each other to see what has been put in the other categories so that we can make sure that there's coherence between one subgroup's action plan and others. So we'll need to do that as well. So I have it up on, well, I guess we have it up on the screen so in case people from home want to see it. So the first is social, emotional wellness. So Mrs. Clifford and Mrs. Dupre, do you want to come share a couple highlights?
Yeah. Do you tell me?
Well, I guess people have to come on twice after if they want to, to get the excitement. Yeah.
Because Dr. Williams said social, emotional became the first goal and the strategies that we have identified at this time for the draft are to support our students to attend and engage in school. Obviously, that's broad and then our action steps will boil it down to those students that were remote most of last year, students that need to be re-engaged, include diversity, Part of our goal is to, or another strategy is to ensure school policies and practices reinforce positive culture and climate. Again, that's a broad strategy, but we have action steps to take to, over the next few years, to make sure that we have a student and family environment and positive culture. We're going to ensure school policies actively affirm students and their diverse identities. This is diversity, which will also be embedded in the other goals, but this is the angle that the social, emotional is going to approach. And then we're going to inform staff, develop lessons, and implement strategies around the CASL framework, which is one of the frameworks that the state has identified as the social, emotional tool. We have had education and PD on CASL, starting with our kickoff at the beginning of the year where we had Carrie Stack come in. It was very well received. She's going to visit with us a couple more times over the course of the year to help us stay on track. Bless you.
Excuse me?
And one holdover from the last strategic plan is we're going to now implement a comprehensive and aligned pre-K to 12 response to social, emotional needs. So the previous strategic goal, it said that we were going to develop, and so now we have developed a working curriculum that's aligned pre-K to 12, and now we're going to start to implement it across all buildings.
So Karen, I just have a question that may or may not tie into this. You mentioned early on, you know, you're looking at the attendance data and specifically and importantly to identify, you know, especially last year, the full remote, even kids who were hybrid, you know, certainly have some deficits, not just academically, but socio-emotional. Has that already started? I mean, it's a goal, it's part of this, but I'm assuming-
It's an action step for this strategy and yes, it has started. It happened all of last year. Every building devoted the North River Collaborative Social Work Interns we had to doing virtual reach-outs. There was multiple home visits, I know, done at the high school level for students that were not engaging as well as, so that attendance is always monitored because it's a first, most obvious indicator, but there are, each building has student support meetings where they're discussing a dip in grades or increased attendance issues or class avoidance and any other number of issues that could be occurring in the social, emotional area. It's, you'll see on our timeline, it's pretty heavy Panorama. The training has happened already for all of the social, emotional staff, school psychs, adjustment counselors, guidance counselors, behavior specialists, and that will be completed by January 22. At our last PD day, we did everybody but the behavior specialists and we did have quite a few teachers that elected to participate and I think that there's already a little bit of a buzz going on about that data that they can see. We are preparing a survey that's going to go out K through, sorry, 3 through 12 for students and we are working with Panorama to develop a family survey that will go out too, so that families can identify what their needs might be or what they're seeing in their students.
So with this first term ending here at the high school, is that going to be part of the conversation that teachers are potentially having with parents? Any deficits that have been noted that can specifically be tied, not just, you know, strength and weaknesses in a core study, but deficits or impacts from being fully remote or hybrid, or is that not quite where we are?
I am going to go out on a limb, but we have building principals here, so I'm going to say that they have already instructed their teaching staff and maybe have identified some of the comments that go on report cards. That might be best to highlight some of those or even have created some new ones. High school has already had parent-teacher conferences. Central, yes, no? Next week?
Yes, the first week of December.
First week of December. So those are opportunities for those conversations to be occurring. Any other questions?
Thank you.
I have one quick one. What is Panorama?
So Panorama is a platform that we have partnered with that ties right into our school brand, school information system. The way it works is that it pulls our attendance records, it pulls our grades once they're posted, it pulls all of the demographic information so that we can divide students by grade, we can divide them by counselor. So every counselor, this is what I went through the training with last week at the PD day, showed counselors how they can create a list of just all of their students and then they can have a flag come up. If a student has a second absence in a row or a third or whatever they determine, they can also self-identify students that were remote last year or hybrid or had a dip in grades last year to be part of, receive other social, emotional services. And they're also creating lessons to happen in the Viking block at the high school as well as at the other two buildings, the guidance counselors are doing whole-class instructions.
Thank you.
So we're trying, we're trying to make sure that we don't miss anybody and we're trying to identify the greatest needs amongst the students, but we're also trying to use a curriculum for all grade one students because just because we don't see it right now doesn't mean that they might not need this intervention. So we are trying to do more grade-level approaches and then supplement on top of that tier two services.
And if I remember correctly, with Panorama, all teachers have same access to the student information, so it encourages teachers to potentially discuss different deficits that they might be seeing in a student and if-
So every teacher can see their student in all areas, yes. So if I'm an English teacher and I can see, well, they're also not doing well in math, I might want to have a conversation with the math teacher, like, what are you seeing? And sort of brainstorm together, bring guidance into it, yes.
So that's the holistic view of the student that we've been kind of not missing, but we just haven't had it together.
And I'll tell you one thing that came up last week at the professional development, which was just insightful, was that because I was focused on school psychologists and adjustment counselors and guidance counselors, the idea of all of those people coming into a room with the same information at the same time allows for the opportunity for you to go forward looking at the whole student instead of, well, what do you know about this and what's the attendance report and going around the room and then collecting the information? You've already, everybody's got it, everybody's got access to it, there should be no secrets and then everybody can use their expertise to sort of help drive that conversation forward. So hopefully, everybody was very excited about that and felt that it would be more efficient, so.
Does this also include any kids that have MCAS scores that maybe have needed improvement?
Thank you for saying that. So yes, MCAS scores, because they're in school brands, are pulled in, their DIBL scores, their I-Rating, any of the diagnostic testing that we're using throughout the district at each different grade level is in there also.
And then they can see with the MCAS which ones they got wrong, so they can see where they need help? Thank you.
Awesome. Anything else?
Any other questions?
So that's, again, a draft and we look forward to, you know, more input on the 22nd as to direction.
Thank you, Karen.
Thank you, Karen. And working along with Karen, we have Deb Dupre was part of the group with Karen as well as Mrs. Nichols. I thought she was coming up because she-
She wanted to be here for the team.
I appreciate that. So the second goal is strong instruction and myself, Mr. Clements, and Mrs. Fisher, as I mentioned to you before, I was part of professional development, Mrs. Fisher was part of technology, but because both of those are aligned so closely with strong instruction, the two of us joined Mr. Clements and both Mrs. Fisher and I have elementary experience, so having a secondary member on our team is beneficial. So I don't know if Mr. Clements wants to join me or if he wants me to go ahead and he can.
We can leave him.
So as Mrs. Clifford mentioned, this is really just a start for us. One of the big things in instruction, especially returning from remote learning, hybrid learning, learning loss that may have taken place, the biggest thing we need to remember is to continue to accelerate students while also trying to fill in the gaps of things that, of missing skills that may have formed. So that's why it was really important for us to have in our goal, grade-level work. We never want to spend time, spend time, I just lost my train of thought, focused on remediation and then not spend time on grade level because students will never catch up if we're constantly just trying to remediate. So it's a scaffolded approach to ensure that even if students are not working at grade level, they're always being exposed and have opportunities to learn at the grade level every day. And that's why a tiered-focused approach is important for us to have within our plan. The other two goals you'll see is really where the tiered instruction comes in. Tier one, when you think of a pyramid, you think of tier one instruction as instruction that all students receive and that's typically grade-level instruction that the teacher's providing. And then tier two instruction are for students who, obviously, they need tier one, they need the grade level, but then maybe they need some remediation, they have some missed skills or some gaps that have formed. And then tier three is that one more layer below where typically a student is a year or more behind in acquiring the grade-level skills. That doesn't mean they don't get tier one, that means they get all three. So they're getting the tier one of grade level, they're getting some tier two intervention, and then maybe they're getting more intense support. It could be through an IEP, but it doesn't necessarily have to be through special education if they need three, the third tier of instruction, it just means it's a little bit more intense, maybe going back a little bit further into missed skills.
You're doing a great job.
Oh, perfect.
So who will determine, like, that's a lot of kids to go through. How, is it the individual teachers that will determine it or is it someone like-
So what's nice about Panorama, it's a color-coded system and it breaks it down by those tiers. So you'll see it based on the green, yellow, and red, and that's how we kind of look at our tiers. Students that are what we consider achieving grade level or progressing, they would be in the green and that would be both for academics as well as social, emotional. They could be green academics with a yellow under social, emotional if, you know, they've had some discipline or they've had some attendance issues or their student success surveys coming back showing some signs of concern, but those color coatings will happen in all areas. So then we'll see a full picture and they'll give an overall whether they're considered progressing, some risk, at-risk, and then they'll have individual ratings based on the categories as well. So we could pull up, as Karen said, you can categorize the students as a building, what our percentage of students that would be considered in that tier one, progressing well, tier two, tier three, as a grade level, as a classroom, and then right down to the individual student. So that's how it would be determined. It'd be looked at differently, certainly from an instructional standpoint, the teacher would look at their academics. From a guidance standpoint, they'd look at the social, emotional. But then if we're looking at students in a student support meeting or a child study meeting, certainly we have to be looking at both of those to make determinations as to where they need the support.
And with the additional, you know, programs that we have in place with the additional training, be it training staff on Panorama, be it the additional focus of child study teams, student support teams, common planning group teams, while we obviously want everybody to be firing on as many cylinders as possible, this also puts an extra set of eyes, just because a student might be green or yellow in September, doesn't necessarily mean that it is going to be the case in November or in January, or we'll hopefully highlight and put more energy, effort, and focus that if a child might be poised, let's say, to slip through the cracks, it becomes much harder for that child to do so and want, they're all interconnected. If there is a behavioral or attendance concern, even if it doesn't start out that way, ultimately it may wind up showing itself academically and vice versa and that kind of thing. So it's all there and as we continue to improve and work on that focus, that's something else that will just keep more eyes and really streamline the communication so it hopefully isn't noticed in a silo where maybe only the English teacher thinks that the child is struggling only in English class and it becomes much more apparent that, whether that's the case or not, if the child is only struggling in one area, that's still valuable data. Or if the child is struggling more across the board, that's also valuable data. You may tackle the issue differently or bring in different people, but.
So at what point, as Panorama is being referenced and monitored and more data is being pulled in, at what point will the parent be brought into the conversation? Because it may not always be necessary right away, right? Like, it may just be a conversation, but I'm sure parents, you know, would be able to offer potentially insight depending on what's going on. So at what point would you expect, or is that still to kind of be determined?
Yeah, I mean, and really, you know, I don't want to come across as if Panorama is the only way for us to have been able to identify this. These are all things that we've had access to identify, it's just now simplifying it in one platform. So even before teachers have the training or the access to the Panorama platform, they're, they have access to get all this information, it's just the time in which it takes to do that and as Karen said, everybody has a piece in this sharing that needs to take place. So I think that the way we're envisioning it at this point is, you know, those that are getting trained right now are those that are part of that student support team. So those that would be sitting at the table for child study if a parent has, you know, brought to the attention of the teacher that they're seeing struggles or if the teacher is bringing to the attention of administration that they're seeing struggles. So I would say that- So I would say that we're getting parent input right now as far as if parents are having those concerns. But it's once the teachers are using that Panorama platform on a daily basis that then those conversations can happen at parent conferences. And when parents reach out about concerns, a teacher can then be able to say, well, I can see here from this view, you know, this is how they're portraying their social-emotional well-being at this point in time. So do we have, I think we said, we did have some teachers attend, but it was mainly focused on our support staff in the area of SEL. But, you know, we'll have to put that in the strategic plan as to when will be the expectation that all staff have been trained and utilizing it. And then once we feel like they should be trained and utilizing it, then we can have that expectation of this is now going to be part of their conversations when they meet with parents at parent conferences if they see that there's concerns that are noteworthy.
Or potentially, you know, in advance of conferences, depending on where the deficits are and...
Right, soon as that trending starts.
Yeah, soon as the trending...
So Panorama will do that, it will show trending arrows. So even if a student is still in green, it can show them starting to trend downwards so that, you know, before they get to that yellow, we would already have that signal from Panorama that they're starting to dip.
So it sounds like, I mean, obviously, teachers know their students, and even people around the building know students and et cetera. But it sounds like for Panorama to have the most impact for what it is, teachers are going to have to rely on that in addition to knowing the student and noticing, you know, just visible behaviors or, you know, grades. So they're going to have to, you know, be more aware of that to kind of put it all together?
Yeah, and I mean, and I think, you know, it's most helpful at the junior, senior level because the kids are seeing so many different adults throughout the day. It's a little bit easier to, you know, notice because you have one teacher at the younger level. So what Panorama will allow for is for them to see this child and how they're looking throughout the whole day. And then maybe, you know, them feeling this is more of an issue than I might have thought it was initially, because I was only looking at it from my one subject area. So hopefully, it will generate that conversation to happen sooner than later, when typically maybe they'd wait a little bit longer because they're not sure how the student is projecting the other blocks of the day. And then the only other piece here outside of the tiered instruction is the curriculum. And, you know, as I share with you, every year we have our curriculum review cycle. We've stayed right on track with making sure that every year we're reviewing the curriculum resources that we have. We're getting feedback from teachers on the resources that they're using. We've been lucky that we've been able to make the purchases every year to upgrade our resources and now adding that piece of, you know, making sure that the resources that we're purchasing are culturally responsive and diverse. So we're adding that in as well. Any questions on...? Yes.
To touch on the diversity side of it, do we know a percentage of our students are children of color? You might not have a number for that, okay.
But, I mean, certainly information that we can...
And do we know what percentage of our teachers are people of color? I ask because I feel like it'd be a shame if a child walked through their entire career at East Bridgewater and never saw a teacher that looked like them. And I see that we have, you know, who's on our walls of our schools and the texts and the events, but who's in our classrooms? And it'd be a disservice to the children if, in their entire 12-year career, they never saw a teacher that looked like them, or a principal, or an administrator. And are we closing off the avenue of role model that they might think, I could see myself as a teacher because I saw that in the fourth grade, or the eighth grade, or whatever grade it would be? And if they're only ever dealing with one race of people, and it's always white students and teachers, they're never seeing the other side of it, it's a huge disservice to them. So I think the diversity part is good, but I think it's not just the walls and the text, it's also the faces in the school.
Yeah, so that's where our recruiting practices would need to, and that's part of the conversation that the superintendent and I are having with the Community Coalition for Change in increasing, you know, where we advertise so that we can maybe cast a wide net and get more diversity within our staff. Because you're absolutely right, you know, students, when they can identify with a person and relate to a person, research shows that they learn better from them. So certainly, we need to increase that. So efforts are underway. We shared with the Community Coalition for Change that we have increased our avenues for advertisement. So we just now have started advertising on Indeed, we've started advertising on Handshake, which is at the college level. Typically, we were always with School Spring, which wasn't getting a lot of traction, especially we've been looking for an English learner teacher for, since the beginning of the school year. So we're hoping by casting a wide net, we'll be able to attract more diversity within the population of staff.
Great, thank you.
All right, great. And then lastly, we have Goal Three, which is assessment and monitor of student understanding. Mr. Phelan is going to speak on behalf of his group. I'm not really sure, he must have been the most popular coach because he got the biggest team. He has himself and Jen McPartlin and Andrew Gentile, Ron Taylor, and Kate Byrne.
It may have been that I just needed that kind of help. No, I mean, I was very lucky in the sense that, again, having Ms. Byrne, having Mr. Gentile from the middle school, we really did have a great cross-section. Mr. Taylor from the high school, and then Ms. Partlin to come in and really work on the technology stuff with us. So when we looked at the assessment and monitoring student understanding, as Dr. Williams said earlier, all of these, all three of these goals kind of work hand in hand. We can't go one without the other. You know, you need a student, somebody needs to be socially emotionally well and feeling safe and feeling supported before they can do any kind of learning. When they do the learning pieces of it, then we can start to look at next steps. And where's the curriculum-driven to get that information on what direction we drive our curriculum in comes from assessment. So what we looked at is kind of what are our next steps? What are we looking to do? And then setting that up. You know, we wanted to make sure that our core content areas identified, that identified for us that the diagnostics, the assessments, the iReadies, the DIBL scores, the MyPath, those kind of things that we can garner on kids and get that information through testing, that we're using that to drive our curriculum. So that we are meeting the points, as Dr. Williams said a little while ago, so that we're meeting them so that they're always accelerating. It's not just about remediation. And then obviously, some of that gets pulled into, including MCAS scores. That one is pulled in from School Brains and brought back into the system. So that comes into Panorama, and it's all kind of weaved together and tied together. One of the other things that we had to look at was obviously PD and an assessment calendar. We put that in there. And then looking at that transition for the testing as well as the PD that's necessary for it. Any questions? I mean, obviously, this is a document we're going to face on the 22nd again, and it's going to be living and changing and moving as we all move, so. Thank you.
So certainly, in addition to enhancing the activities within the three goals that have been established, certainly, things could be brought up on the 22nd that then may show a need for us to add goals or add initiatives that we may not have thought about.
Thank you, Gina.
You're welcome.
So again, the meeting is Monday, November 22nd, from 4:30 to 6:30. And Lucy, you'll find some friends to bring.
So I'm going to put it out, I'm going to send a letter out probably by the end of this week or beginning of next week inviting anybody like to come. I know that the, Mr. Gentile and Mrs. Byrne will put it out to their councils, their PTOs, have an election to get somebody up. And I know that Mr. Clements, we've talked about this, that, you know, he's working on either getting a council or having someone come from each, you know, we have a great band, great, the music parents could send someone in, the athletics could send someone in. Mr. Clements could call somebody who he thinks could be a good addition to the group. Anyone is welcome. I think everybody should be involved in the strategic plan because it's everybody's living document. And then when you have a living document, we can say, well, we started this at the school with the, in the district administration, and it funnels up to our students and through our administration at their buildings. And each building has their own strategic plan. So I think we're, this is a really good start. Dr. Williams, going on Friday is another great start, just to hear what other people are doing. I know a lot of people are working on this. Dr. Williams is sort of our facilitator as we move, you know, throughout this. We're also, we will have food on the 22nd. If that brings more people in, we will have food.
I think you might get more students to come if you let them, give them a pass on any activity they might have between 4:30 and 6:30, because I know Lucy and her friends, because I know a few of them, have activities that they're involved in. So they might need an excuse to be excused from their activity. Right, Lucy? There you go, tell all your friends they gave their excuse from their activity.
But I think it's a good start, I know it's a good start. The nice part is the principals are having thoughtful discussions with each other. And to have a K through, pre-K through 12, comprehensive, motivating, inspirational, strategic, instructional, support calendar like this comes from thoughtful people like the administration team. They are really doing a great job pre-K through 12, and this is only going to help streamline the process. And this is what this does. It helps us streamline the process for what they do in their buildings, but what we do to pass a budget so that they can do what they do in there. I wanted to add one thing about assessment and data. Jay Phelan and I talk a lot about assessing a child or the data that comes out. We were talking about being a real inclusive school. And it's something that Jay's going to put some time into the next part, the next half of the year. What does inclusion really mean? And I hope that Jay comes back in January and talks to us of what it really means and what's really inclusive. Because we've done a disservice in public education, whether it's special needs, whether it's having a college prep course or an AP course. When we start to silo like that, we do a disservice. Somewhere along the line, somebody is going to get disserviced. And Jay and I had this conversation a couple weeks ago, or I guess last, two weeks ago, and sat down and really had this conversation. And I think Jay is the one that will be able to tell us what inclusivity looks like at East Bridgewater, how we're doing with inclusivity at East Bridgewater, and how we can do a better job of it moving forward. The data will suggest that we do well in some areas and not so well in others. And some of our assessments will suggest we do well in some areas and not in others. Mr. Gentile had a great conversation with his, in common planning, or with his grade-level teams, looked at MCAS questions, started to say, where did we fall down? Where did we stand up? Where did we really do well? Where's our strengths, where are our weaknesses? And he found out, along with Jen McPartlin, who facilitates the curriculum and instruction piece with Dr. Williams, that we may have our curriculum alignment out of sync with the questions of MCAS, meaning we're still going to teach the material in fourth grade, but it could have been, we should have done this one in September and done this one later in March. And when we talk about assessment and data and monitoring, that's what these guys are doing well. When they look at tests like iReady or talk about how we want a student's growth mindset to be set in and looking at the MCAS data, is why did we fall down on fractions? Well, we didn't do fractions till later in the year, and maybe if we'd done them earlier, because we already started them in third grade, so why weren't we doing them here? Those are types of conversations that these teachers are having. The one thing about ESER, which has helped us to do, is to put these intervention teachers in. We have a math intervention teacher at the Central School and one at the Mitchell School. I don't think we've had, since I've been here, this is more, we've had a lot of cross-talking. We've had a lot of Mitchell to Central now having conversations of how kids are doing on assessment. What is the data saying about how Central School teachers are doing? What's the data saying of what we need to do better at Mitchell School? What's it saying about how we need to talk more throughout the year and not just in June? When we say, well, here comes second grade, Mr. Gentile, this is what they look like, this is what they did, and this is what we think you should do with them. And then when they get to sixth grade, well, here you go, Mr. Clements, this is what we did with them for four years, this is what you should do now, but they're yours now. So we're doing a lot of conversations and talking about assessment, data. But the monitoring piece, which is the big one, is collaborating on what has to be the next steps of letting the child grow. And great conversations came out of our administration meeting two weeks ago when we had the principals in. Something that we heard from Central School was different at the Mitchell School, was different at the high school. That day, we began to churn that and say, wait a minute. If it can be done at the Central School, we can do it here and we can do it here. But how do we do it? And how do we make it seamless? So Jay will come back and talk to us in January, I would say, probably, and give us some data. I know that Karen, right now, is looking up, I believe it's less than 1%, Karen? A little bit more. Your question, Scott, we're going to look it up and get you, she's on the DESI website right now to make sure that we're giving the accurate information before we leave.
I have a curiosity question, but it's probably for...
Dr. Williams.
Dr. Williams, yeah. Oh, you know how, so I know, I'm pretty sure that the principals meet with other principals, like, on the South Shore or whatever, and the superintendent meets with other superintendents. And, well, you probably meet with other assistant superintendents, do you? So does anybody, does anybody discuss curriculum? Like, do, you know, like, if they're, well, I don't know this answer. So do you all discuss curriculum, like, with other districts and, you know, maybe for, like, best practices? Or, oh, just curious.
Yes, a lot of times, and we have monthly meetings, but a lot of times, we have a shared email that if people are looking for new curriculum in a particular area or looking for advice as to resources that have been successful, they'll put something out. Do you want me to ask about something?
Oh, no, I was just curious. Well, I'll tell you something as a side note later, but I was just curious.
We're all at meetings all the time, I can tell you that. We're meeting doubt by the end of the week, we're meeting now. But I know that, you know, Jay Phelan is at probably two or three out of district or with our collaboratives a week. And I think everybody's talking about the same, we don't want the same programs, and we're not the same as Abington, and we're not the same as Norton, but the same type of programming. We do ask if somebody else is using Panorama, if you're using iReady, if you're using Wonders. We do ask around and we do call other schools, find out, did you like it? Did you not like it? Did you think that it helped? Do you think that it's a support? Do you think it's weak? Do you think it's strong? So we will say that.
So speaking of meetings and in consideration of time, I don't think we need the principals stay here anymore. So if you all would like to get home to your families, feel free to do so. Thank you.
That's not you, Dr. Williams.
No, I get it. So next on the agenda is the fiscal year 2023 budget meeting with town administrator. So I am going to assume that, oh, I was going to make the wrong assumption.
Well, it's just, John and I, we have not met the new town administrator.
Okay.
We do, we are, we're on the calendar to meet with the town administrator in December. Once, you know, that's why we're trying to get this sort of in place so that we can move forward. I know that John, the next meeting that we have will be John's meeting, the financial meeting, where he'll be able to discuss some other things going on. Oh, thank you. And discuss those types of things. Like I said, the budget's always in process, and John, if you want to jump in at any time. But we really don't have much information because we haven't sat with the subcommittee. John and I have had some conversations, especially because of ESER. John and I have had some conversations, especially because of ESER and the ARPO funds that are coming into the district from Plymouth County. We'll bring those funds, I think it was 2.2 million to Plymouth County for us or 23 million that was out.
If you're talking the recent ARPO.
Yeah.
I think there's 4.2 million to the town.
To the town. So that money's supposed to be used for, like, infrastructure. John can talk a little bit more in depth, and maybe we can even have the town administrator come in at one point to talk to that. But those are types of projects that we'll do for the infrastructure. And then ESER funds, we've already talked about those, and those are really, really embedded in here. And then I will let you know personnel, and that's the big one. And then, as you know, we will start on Monday, the 15th. We will have, we were sitting down with the EBEA, and that will only be the ground rules. We'll just be signing the ground rules and just talking about dates going forward. All, all the school committee can be at the November 22nd. We are posting it. And I know that Ellen questioned, and I think Tim questioned, and I happen happened to be on the phone with Nick Domenello. We can post school, we can post the negotiation meetings, however, they are executive session and privileged meetings to be in there, whether you send two or three. They are still, they will be posted meetings. So if the entire school, if the, if the entire subcommittee wanted to go, we just post the meeting, just so people know that we did have a quorum of subcommittee members in there. And most of the time, nobody really says much. It's a lot of listening, the first two or three meetings to see what we want.
Yeah, Nick does most of the talking.
Scott, just so you, I wanted to get back to you. You had asked the question on what does our diversity look like? In Central School, there's 551 students. 0.9% are Asian, 5% are black, 86% are white, 4.9% are Hispanic, and 3.3% are other. At Mitchell School, there's 626 students, 1% are Asian, 5.6% are black, 83.7% are white, Hispanic, 5.9%, and other, 3.8%. At the junior senior high school, we have 934 students, 0.6% are Asian, 4.8% are black, 86.6% are white, 4.2% are Hispanic, and 3.7% are other.
I'm going to guess and say those other could be biracial or maybe just another ethnicity, probably.
I would.
That would be astute.
And our, and our faculty and staff, I would say there's probably less than like 1%. We have, we are, we have tried. We are not saying no to anyone who wants to be a member of our school committee, our school community. It's, we're on Indeed, as like Dr. Williams said, we've posted every place that we can post. You know, it's not, I saw two women on the fire department a couple of weeks ago at the bonfire, and I didn't realize we had women. That's diversity. We have, I think, two women on the police department. That's diversity. We have LBGTQ members throughout our district. That's diversity. I know that people want to see, I guess, a different ethnic background. I do too. I don't know any other way to do it than to keep putting it into the, we put it in the Boston Globe, we put it in the Indeed, School Spring, Handshake. And we're pushing, but so is on the other, I just want to know, I just want everybody to know that this is a push for every district in the Commonwealth, and there's, not a lot of people are going into education, number one. I will tell you that, so.
We had a dynamic, what, she was our final choice several years ago
Yes.
for principal.
Yeah.
Dynamic, and she was of, I don't remember her actual ethnic background, but she was phenomenal, and she ended up staying in Boston, right? So there's that pull too, you know, where they, you know, choose, choose to be. But we, she would, she was dynamic.
Right.
I still remember her. So moving on.
Is there anything else that you want to add?
Are we getting the budget? No, I think we've, I've got the budget model set up. I mean, we've, we're starting the budget with as much information as we have, but it's going to be, I think it's going to be a long budget year with the negotiations and the grants, and it's going to be a lot of work for the school committee to understand it all too, so.
A lot of work for you, though.
I'll call Barbara tomorrow and try to set up a budget subcommittee meeting.
Does anyone have any questions for John? And I can see that there's no one here for public comment, so we will move right along to our action items. So action is required on the minutes from our last school committee meeting of October 12th, and I think everyone here was there. So I will take a motion to approve our school committee meeting minutes of October 12th, 2021. So moved. Moved by Ellen.
Second.
Second by Lauren. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Action is required to approve accounts payable warrants, 1-7SV dated October 20th, '21, and 1-9SV dated November 3rd, 2021. I take a motion to approve.
So moved.
Moved by Ellen.
Seconded.
Second by Scott. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Action is required on payroll warrants, 1-6PS dated October 13th, 2021, and 18PS dated October 27th, 2021. I take a motion to approve.
So moved.
So moved by Ellen.
Seconded.
Second by Scott. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Well, let's do that again. All in favor? Aye. In your documents, Gina has reviewed and approved a home education plan for a student for this 2021-2022 school year. Superintendent LaGo recommends the approval of this home education plan, so I take a motion to approve.
So moved.
Moved by Ellen.
Seconded.
Second by Scott. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And final action, Ellen, item is
You have Ellen on the brain.
Is the approval, the request from our school psychologist at the Mitchell School to take two personal, personal B days on Monday, January 3rd, 2022, and Tuesday, January 4th, 2022. Superintendent recommends this approval. You do have her request in amongst your papers. So if you've had a chance to review this, I take a motion to approve.
So moved.
Moved by Ellen. Seconded by Scott. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Everybody else aye?
Yes, aye.
Are there any announcements before we?
No school Thursday.
No school Thursday.
We'll be back.
And Lucy, when, I, I can't remember when, when do the girls play next?
I think tomorrow.
Tomorrow night.
Tomorrow, and it's a home game, right?
No, it's in Zavarian.
Zavarian, that's right. So that would be, do you know what time kickoff is?
It's 6:30, I think.
So tomorrow night, the girls varsity team plays at Zavarian at 6:30. And this is their third game, I think, right, in the tournament? So, so for anyone who's listening and wants to attend tomorrow night, there is a charge. I think it's $5 for students and $7 for adults.
And I think I saw in an email somewhere that you have to purchase them in advance.
I don't think you, do you have to?
I did see that.
It's an electronic ticket.
Okay, okay.
Yep.
Because I know that you
The MI is trying to go, you know, they're trying to be progressive.
We don't have another meeting in November, do we?
We, we do not. We have the meeting on the 22nd, the strategic planning meeting, but we don't have
I would wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving, even though we have no other meeting, because we usually do that, but at the next meeting in November, but we don't have it.
Lucy, when is the band night?
A little early, but.
I don't, there wasn't a specific date. It's just the week leading up to Thanksgiving, one of those days.
And what about the pies? Did anybody come to sell us pies?
Yes.
Oh, yes.
Miss, Beth Pennington came in to sell pies.
Yeah, the pies are coming in, I think, the 23rd.
You missed it.
It's every year.
It was nice, and I don't know if they've always done this, but they had the availability to order online.
Yeah, they started that last year, actually.
Oh, they did.
And there was like a lot of, a lot of stuff, not just pie, so.
Yeah, cookie dough.
There's like beef jerky, anything you want.
You must have been absent that day. Who was that now? Was it NHS or?
It was Student Senate.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
And Central School still has their Cupcake Charlie fundraiser, I think, going on until the 18th, maybe?
There's another fundraiser coming up too, maybe it was for DECA. I don't know what it is, though.
Just get involved in your schools. Get involved in your schools.
There's lots to get involved in.
But it's not only at the high school.
That's right.
I don't want it to focus on just high school. We've got a lot going on at the Central School and a lot going on at the Mitchell School. Don't forget that we have kids in pre-K, 1, 2, and then all the way up through.
All right, with that, I take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved by Ellen. Second by Scott. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.